Here.
Mr. Greszczynow is not here. Ms. Guaman?
Here.
Mr. Dian?
Here.
Mr. Fizzy?
Here.
Mr. Zangary?
Here.
Ms. Scheisler is not here. Mr. Leon is not here. Mr. DeLorenzo is not here. Mr. Harry?
Here.
And Suzanne?
Sebasco.
Sebasco in for Mr. Maraella.
If everyone would stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to liberty and justice for all. Sunshine notice, I mean, I can add, according to the sunshine laws. Any communications? Um, not at this time. Comments from here, there were none. A couple of minutes, can I get it up for June 12th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Local?
Chairwoman Obrado?
Yes.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Gredano?
Yes.
Ms. Guaman?
I'm staying.
Mr. Dian?
Yes.
Mr. Fizzy?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Oh, minutes have been approved.
We don't have a bill of list, do we? Oh, we don't have anything yet this time.
There is one communication, the 167th Street, they did notice that they will be on, they noticed for tonight's meeting, but they're going to be on July 10th. We want to announce, but no further notice is necessary. We carry it.
Okay.
I think the letter is right there.
Okay, I got it, thank you. Based on the communication received from Michael Piramali, attorney for Acumen Properties, that matter will be relisted for the July 10th, 2025 meeting, and no further notices necessary.
Thank you.
Uh, resolutions to be memorialized, we don't have any. So the applications before the board for P B 25, 03, 41, and 45, we're going to be, are you ready?
Yes. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jason Tudell, attorney for the applicant. First, I want to, I appreciate, I want to thank the board for having your special meeting. I know this is everybody's time volunteering, and I agree, we appreciate that. So we're here, um, the last time we were here, two months ago, um, we had made some revisions from the initial time that we were here in March, and we were come from three, three families to two, three families. And the board at the last meeting expressed concern that the two, three families, based on parking and the number of bedrooms, was maybe a little too intense for the site. So since then, we revised the application again. We now have two, two families here, which is permitted in the zone. And remember, there's a subdivision, that subdivided the lot into two lots. Each lot will now be conforming, whereas when there were three families, they were actually undersized. Now they're actually over by about 500 square feet on one, and about 700 square feet on the other. So there are two, two family, um, houses. The way that we were able to achieve that, the architect will explain, is that the basement units, if you recall, there was a, um, a single dwelling in the basement, that was removed. That is just going to be a typical basement with a rec room, with just access to the first floor unit. Um, in addition to that, I just want to say that we think the buildings were slightly reduced in size, and that also, even though we were already compliant from an impervious coverage and open space perspective, we are even more compliant or under on the impervious and open space requirements. So I was going to have Mr. Corus, who was previously sworn and accepted by the board as an architect, just explain those revisions. And then the variance relief that we asked for, again, has been decreased. But I still want to have our planner, Mr. McDonough, testify on the, um, a couple C variances that we still need in connection with the application. So Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to recall, Mr. Corus?
Yes.
Okay. Building still, now, during the road?
Yes.
License is still current, in good standing?
Still it is.
Great. Okay. Can you just explain to the board, you just referred to the sheet you were on, when you prepared, um, the changes made to both homes?
Sure. Basically, we set it up where we took two feet off the width of the buildings and one foot off the depth. Now, the reduction in width was added to the side garden along William Street, and then the, uh, for the corner lot, and for the interior lot, the, uh, reduction in the width was added to the adjacent neighborhood property. Uh, the middle, between the two, are still five feet, which comply. However, we thought it was a good idea to try to increase the, uh, corner issue, particularly on the corner facing lot, or I'm sorry, the lot that's adjacent to the corner, where you overlook the, uh, sightline for cars coming on William and on Portland. Uh, the depth was reduced by one foot. Uh, our proposed building coverage now is 39.52% for, uh, 89, which is Lot 4.01. Then the corner one, we have Lot 3.01. That is down to 37.75. In the previous scheme, where we had two, two families, we had it, I'm sorry, uh, two, mm, two, two families, we had a square footage on the interior lot of 43%, so it was about 2% reduction, uh, so almost 3% reduction in the, uh, building coverage, even though it's still compliant, uh, previously. And then on the corner lot, we have previously 40.56%, now we're down to 37.75%.
And can you just explain, in terms of the interior layout, how you were able to remove the third unit?
Sure. If you go to Sheet 82, which is the floor plans.
Can you angle that a bit, so those of us in the audience can see?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If you go to the left side of the sheet, and basically, we still have a three-car garage, one being for the primary unit, which is on the floor above the basement, around floor level. Then we have a garage space, uh, for the second floor, which probably be a tenant, uh, that the primary owner would rent to. Uh, if you look at here, basically, the building, as I mentioned before, we lost two feet of width. Uh, what I did is I eliminated the full bathroom downstairs. I eliminated the apartment, actually, that was the main thing. And then I created a hallway. We have a staircase up from the first floor. No doors, except for the garage, which has to be fire-rated. Then we have a hallway that goes into recreation space. In the back rear, the left corner, we have a utility room that's access off the garage, in case somebody wants to come in while the company is home. They can go in there and do the surfacing. We have two A C condensers, one for each unit. And then also, what we did is, we have a sliding glass door under the deck with a small concrete patio. Uh, I think one of the initial plans we had, we had actually a man door, or a, I guess, a single swing door, which makes it easier to convert to an apartment. So we decided, like in other towns that we do, we made this sliding glass door out to the backyard. So it gives the people on the first floor access to the backyard. If they want to put a fence around the property, they don't have to go like from the front steps down to the back, into the backyard. And that's basically the same configuration for both of them. First and second floor are pretty much the same, however, you know, the square footage went down. Uh, they're still pretty comfortable units. Uh, we have about 11, 3 secondary bedrooms, and we have a primary bedroom in the front. It has its own en suite, uh, and a hall bathroom. We also have a stackable laundry in the unit, so people don't have to go down to the basement and go to laundromat. And then within the primary unit, we have two closets, one walk-in, one, uh, typical closet, then we have a en suite that has a, uh, lavatory, you know, I'm sorry, a cabinet with a sink, toilet slash, uh, water closet, and then we have a shower. So it's basically a two-bedroom configuration. The guests could use the hall bathroom, which is off the hallway. That's kind of the bedroom wing. And then at the front, right corner, we have living room space. On the first floor, you can see, we have the entry from the primary staircase from the sidewalk. There's also a staircase that goes down to the ground floor level, where we have the, uh, hallway that takes to the back.
And all the, um, the engineering improvements that don't exist today on the property, and we plan on incorporating sewage pits, those are all still incorporated in the project, even with the removal of the other unit?
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have basically a thousand square feet, uh, I'm sorry, a thousand cubic feet, which I think, uh, I'm sorry, a thousand gallons, which is a big over. So, you know, what we do is usually we work out with the engineer, with a drainage, a drainage certification and a curb test, and we submit it to the township engineer.
Right, and as we previously stated, we're to comply with any outstanding comments from Mr. Harry's side?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have, but really. Like I said, you know, we also showed the elevations. We basically have a brick front. We'll probably do a stucco or a panel bay window. And then the rest of the sides will be like a, uh, some sort of, uh, horizontal siding, probably with a hardy plank or something at the end of the townhouse. So we basically have a nice hardy plank. I guess we'll mix up the colors, so that people don't confuse the two houses. So we'll do the brick on the corner, maybe a red, and then we can do either gray or, uh, it looks crazy, but the black, but we'll try to do a nice gray on the interior ones, just to break it up, so they're not, I knew similar.
And so I think this came up along with the last meeting, when someone asked me to eliminate the, uh, you knew the basement. You did eliminate the, um, the bathroom basement part. But somebody, I think, had also asked, and I think it's going on fine, that the closet could be eliminated for the basement as well. And that would be an issue that the board had.
No, we, we have a small closet kind of behind on the stair that we can use for posts and stuff like that, you know, in the back, we can take it out. Actually, we make the space nicer, of course, more of an open space, uh, on the ground.
I just remember somebody raising that, I just wanted to.
The bathroom is still shown here.
It's a powder room. Uh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, right, just for like a basement, but no shower or anything.
We're doing gardening.
Watch your hands.
Okay. Does the board have any questions on this? No?
No, just, just one, I just had to, I was going to request that the closet be removed now, but it's going to be on file with it.
Okay. Actually, it makes space, thanks.
I'll close this portion from the board, and open up to the public. Does the public have any questions? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, everyone, Michael Sheldon, 47 Flood Street. Just want to final accounting of the bedroom situation. I know there are now two, two-family houses, each residential unit, am I correct?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. Six, total of six bedrooms per structure?
Yes.
And 12 overall?
Yes, and all the overall.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, just to get that. And, uh, what is the, the total number of parking spaces?
We have basically six parking spaces, uh, four for the primary unit, and then one, uh, two for the secondary unit, one in the garage, and one in the driveway. For the primary unit, we have two in the driveway and two in the garage.
Okay, so six parking spaces per building?
Per building, yes.
Okay. As you've been compliant with all the, yeah.
Yes, any exerting.
All right, thank you. I just, uh, I'm glad that guys were able to make those concessions with the scale of the amount that we all mentioned.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, so then I'll close this portion. Who's that, your next witness?
Sure.
Yes, our final witness, Madam Chair, is John McDonough, professional planner. We haven't sworn him in yet, so we should swear him in and qualify him for the record.
Uh, good evening, Mr. McDonough. Um, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give on this application shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Would you please spell your last name for the record?
Sure. Hi, everyone, John McDonough, M C, capital D O N, O U G H.
Do you want me to go through Mr. McDonough's qualifications? All right, John, can you just give the board the benefit of your educational background, licenses, how they experience testifying as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. That license is current, and it's in good standing. I'm also a member of the A I C P, which is our national certification. That's current and in good standing. I have the good fortune of getting to do this throughout the entire state on a nightly basis. I've been here in your, the fair town before as well.
So John, in collaboration of this project, you visited the site and the surrounding area?
Yes, I have.
Did you review all the plans, um, as well as all the professional reports?
Yes, I have.
All right. And you've also reviewed the relevant sections of the zoning ordinance and master plan?
Yes, I have.
So there's some, a couple C variances that we need in connection with the subdivision application. Can you give your analysis of those, and how they meet the C1 or C2 criteria?
Sure thing. The land use process, as we all know, is supposed to be an interactive process, and it sounds to me like that's what's happened here. Compliments to the board for taking an original application, um, making requests of the applicant to make modifications, remembering that we started with three lots here. We're now down to two lots. There was a point where we had three family dwellings. We're now down to two family dwellings. We think we've landed at a good spot, where that interactive process has produced two buildings here that are compatible and in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. Again, this is a neighborhood that's defined by a nicely coingled mix of residential uses. We've got some apartments that are sort of framing the corner that these lots are on. We've got some detached dwellings, one, two, and three-family dwellings as well. Importantly here, there are two lots that exist there now. One is a sliver of a lot, one is a larger lot. The applicant is going to re-subdivide or do a lot line adjustment, so that we now have two uniform lots at this location, which is a much better plating of land than what is presently there now. We know that the plating of land is what produces the houses, and we think the lot sizes here, which are fully conforming with your zoning ordinance for the, um, R B residential district, where two-family dwellings are permitted use in the zone, so no relief in terms of the use of the density or the lot size. Substantial compliance with your R B zoning requirements. We think advances good planning and orderly growth and development. The uses are both permitted. Both lots fully conform as to the required lot area. Uh, the dwellings are substantially in conformance to all of your bulk controls, the building height, the lot coverage, the open space and the parking all comply. So I think there were good questions from our public now, and the applicant responded in the affirmative, that there's no relief related to parking on this site. The relief that the applicant is seeking is relatively minor. It's threefold at this point. Number one is for the lot depth, which is really a function of the existing lot condition. If you merge these two lots, 75 feet is what you have in terms of the depth of the property. 100 feet is the minimum that's required. That's unavoidable relief for any type of development on this particular piece of property. Everything around it is either developed or comprised of roads, so there's no additional land to cure that deficiency. As you just heard through architectural testimony, we have rear setback relief at the closest point, we're at 15.59, where 20 feet would be the minimum that's required in the side yard. Uh, again, relatively de minimis, four to five feet shorter than what the zoning ordinance would require. And again, better alternative than that current plating of land, which is that little sliver of a lot that should have presently. And then the side yard setback favoring the interior setbacks, the five feet for each locked interior lot to the other. Um, on Lot 3.01, because we're a corner lot, we now have 7.06, where, and that's an effective front yard, where 20 feet would be the minimum that's required. We have good compatibility here with the prevailing setback on the street. The adjacent home, which is also a two-family, is right up there on the street line. And then as we work away further down William Street, on the opposite side of the street, we're also looking at a string of homes that are also at that zero or close to zero foot setback. So not disrupting any sort of neighborhood pattern when we have that setback at 7.06, where 20 would be the minimum required. Um, all things said, this is reconcilable under the C2 balancing test as a better zoning alternative. Uh, we have good case law out there. The Kalpin case talks about improved neighborhood harmony as being the basis for a bulk or C2 variance. Here, we're going to get better plating of land. We're going to get good neighborhood harmony with the two buildings that are proposed here. And all of the above would promote purposes of the land use law, especially purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare with new housing stock. Taking that unsightly parking lot that's out there now, and it's clearly discordant with the residential character of the area, repurposing it in a way that it is compatible with the area, we think is a, is a good thing. Advances purpose A. Also, these are going to be nice, attractive buildings on scale with the neighborhood. That goes towards purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment. And finally, purpose M, taking a built, constructed lot, repurposing it, redeveloping it, is consistent with the planning goal for efficient use of land. With respect to the negatives, really, when we're looking at setbacks, we look at light air and open space. We think the applicant has done a good job of retrofitting this development into the overall neighborhood pattern. Again, compliments to the board on your input on the application, and then, of course, compliments to our applicant for responding. Uh, we think we've landed at a good spot with two, two-family dwellings. Um, again, relatively minor relief on balancing here. The clear weight is on the positive side, with little, if any, weight on the negative side. That's the criteria for the C2 test, so I believe approval is warranted.
All right, and just to follow up questions? Do you think the fact that the lot is compliant and actually exceeds the amount of open space and is less than the required impervious coverage amount, coupled with the drainage improvements goes to both meet or advance the positive and negative criteria?
Yes, indeed. And of course, very much, you've got sea bass floating out there now. That's going away, so that's going to improve light and air as well.
All right, so in that regard, do you think there's no substantial detriment to the public?
No, clearly no substantial detriment.
All right, and your testimony about how it, you know, works with the patterns of the area, do you believe there's any substantial impairment to the zone planners or by zoning ordinance?
No, no substantial detriment or impairment.
So do, just kind of coupling the variances all together, do you think that the benefits of the variances that we're proposing outweigh any potential detriments that could be?
Substantially outweigh. New housing stock, neighborhood harmony, variety of land uses, desirable visual environment, all substantially outweigh the relatively minor relief that the applicant is seeking.
That's all I have for Mr. McDonough. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from the board? I'll close that portion of the public. Do you have any questions on this witness?
No question, but a final comment?
All right, uh, we'll close this portion.
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to open up to public comment, and then I can do a quick summary. I'll be very quick, okay?
I'll open up a public comment. Mr. Sheldon, Corona?
Sheldon, comment, I look like I need to swim in, since I'm, just swim in.
Sure, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give on this application shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and nothing but the fact?
I do. Michael Sheldon, 47 Flood Street. Just want, very quickly, I want to commend and congratulate the planning board and the applicant for working collaboratively in scaling back the originally proposed project to something that is a win-win for everybody, both the township, the planning board, it's a win-win-win. The planning board, the township, and the, the applicant. This may be one of the very few times I'm going to be leaving the planning board without a migraine headache, so thank you all. It's not over yet.
It's our honor.
I know, the next time I'll, okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments? Uh, close this portion. It's all right.
Yeah, just briefly, I think, uh, based on, we came in, I think we were, you know, trying our best with the original proposal, but maybe we, maybe it was a little bit too much for the board, and I think what's, what's here now, two, two-family homes, two conforming lots, the variances that we're seeing are pretty minimal. The fact that we were able to reduce the size of the homes and get, you know, minimum open space to be much greater than what's required, a better impervious coverage, drainage improvements, uh, I think really made the project something that is good for the neighborhood. I think we meet the C2 criteria, and I would respectfully request that the board grant the application, obviously with all the conditions and stipulations that we made throughout the course of the proceeding. So thank you very much. That's it. So it'll be quick.
Do I get a, uh, a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
A second. Local?
Chairwoman Obrado?
Yes.
Mr. Venero?
Yes.
Mr. Gredano?
Yes.
Ms. Guaman?
Yes.
Mr. Dian?
Yes.
Mr. Fizzy?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Okay, approved all in either.
All right, great, thank you, thank you very much. There was a motion to approve, I mean, sir.
Yes.
Now, I want, can I ask the attorney one question? Are you related to Andrew Sebasco?
I am, yes.
Is that, uh?
He's my uncle.
Your uncle, yeah?
Yes.
That was my first job in law school. And working for him, I heard.
At Burton Berstein?
Yeah, this is like, oh, it was a law court, maybe 2001.
It was my first job in law school, too, so I'm happy.
All right, uh, the next year is 2510, 59 Salter Place. Are you ready?
We are, Madam Chair, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Piramali, the law firm's Gashon Camaco, One Bowl and Drive, Speed 102 in West Orange. Here tonight on behalf of applicant property owner and entity, Acumen Realty LLC. The applicant is before the board tonight requesting minor subdivision approval in order to demolish the existing structures on the site, and to subdivide an existing lot into two lots for the construction of two new two-family dwellings, one new two-family dwelling on each lot. The property is known as 59 Salter Place, uh, otherwise known as Block 401, Lot 14 on the tax maps of the township of Belleville. The subject property is located in the S L R, or Silver Lake Presidential Zone, and the two-family uses proposed are permitted in the zone. The applicant is here tonight requesting only minor subdivision approval, and presents an application to this board that will fully conform to the Belleville zoning ordinance. To support this application tonight, I intend to call only one witness, and since we're a project engineer and our land surveyor, Nicholas Marucci of Marucci Engineering, to go over the zoning requirements and the subdivision as proposed. In addition to Mr. Marucci, we also have both Manu and Raj Gently here with us tonight as officers of the property owner and applicant entity, Acumen Properties LLC. And they're here, and Abel, to answer any questions that members of the board, board experts, and members of the public may have regarding this proposed application. Uh, so with that, Madam Chair, I would ask to call Nicholas Marucci to testify.
Please, 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 swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and all the others. Please state your name and spell your last name.
It's Natola Marucci, M A R U C C I.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Marucci, would you be kind enough to give the board the benefit of your experience in the field of architecture and education, so that we may qualify you as an expert in both the fields and areas?
Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional surveyor in the state of New Jersey. I, uh, received my bachelor's degree from University of Delaware in civil engineering in 2005, um, and my, uh, bachelor's degree in plant engineering technology in 2011 from N J I T, University Institute of Technology. Currently have, have licenses, uh, in good standing.
Thank you very much. Uh, did you prepare the plans for this project, for the subdivisions that we're here for?
Yes, I did.
Would you describe the current conditions of the property?
Sure. Uh, the existing lot, uh, I'm going to just turn to Sheet 2, the existing lot that's developed with a single, a single-family home, one and a half-story dwelling, uh, as well as a driveway, and a detached garage at the rear of the property.
Mr. Marucci, the plans that you're using, these are the same plans that were submitted to the board, so nothing must be marked wrong.
Yes.
Mr. Marucci, thanks. What's the current orientation of the lots?
Currently, the, uh, the lot, it's a one lot, 50 foot wide by 125 foot deep. Uh, there's a, uh, about one foot elevation difference from the rear of the property to the streets, and, um, and has, uh, developed with a single-family home and driveway and detached garage.
And should the subdivision be approved? What is the proposed orientation of the lots and the proposed condition of the properties? And proposed use of the properties?
Our proposal is to, uh, subdivide the property into two, uh, conforming lots, 25 foot wide by 125 foot deep. Uh, the, uh, lots, uh, would be developed, or proposed to develop them with two, two-family homes, uh, and driveways, uh, patios, uh, sidewalks, uh, and driveways, uh, patios, uh, and sidewalks, uh, as would the, uh, normal development with, or use single, or, uh, two-family homes.
And how many parking spaces are proposed for this use?
Uh, two.
For each two-family dwelling?
For each two-family.
And that does conform to the Belleville zoning?
So that does conform, correct.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, I have no further questions. Let me just sign off to the board for questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, everyone. Um, about the basement area in the exercise room, there's a bath and a walk-in closet. Could, would you consider eliminating them?
The, the, uh, it's actually not a, a basement, uh, that's, uh, the first floor. It's the first floor, it's, it's not, they're, they're, these are slab walls.
Okay, they're on the slab, and that's the first floor?
Right, right.
So would you consider eliminating them?
That's something, something that.
Or that would be something to ask later?
I would certainly speak to my client.
Would you, would you just repeat the question, eliminate, what are we adding to?
There's an exercise room on the first floor with a walk-in closet and a bathroom. Would you be willing to?
And what would you propose to replace, replace that?
Nothing, more space.
Just empty space?
Yes.
Okay. If we can continue on, I will take brief recess, if that's possible, and I'll ask my client if we have any more questions. I'll just wait this before we do take that recess. I'd like to move forward.
Anyone else have any questions? I'll close this portion, open up to the public.
Ask one more question, please. Good evening again. Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Fledge Street. I, uh, I realize this is another standard S.L.R. project with two, two-family houses on each, which are. I just wanted to know the, the bedroom coverage, is there three bedrooms for each residential unit?
The, uh, there's two, uh, two apartments with three bedrooms.
Okay, so total of six bedrooms in each building, a total of twelve, uh, sorry, just wanted to make sure, it can be counted. And you already testified that there's, uh, just four, four parking spots that actual old S.L.R. zoning requirements require.
Correct, correct.
That's it. Thank you, Mrs. Sheldon.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I'll take it, yeah, now, okay, to talk. Can I get a motion to recess for five minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Be right back. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we still have Mr. Marucci on the road, we do need him, but I spoke to my clients, and they're certainly willing to eliminate the, uh, the exercise room and the walk-in closet. The bathroom there, they would like to retain as a half-bath, which is relatively common, uh, to avoid the first-floor tenant, if they're using the basement area, I'm sorry, the second-floor tenant, to use the first floor as a half-bath, but it'd be a half-bath, not a full-bath. Happy to eliminate the, uh, walk-in closet, happy to eliminate the exercise room, that will all be open space. That's acceptable to the board, as my client proposes.
Yeah, I'm actually fine with that. You can have your exercise room. You don't have to get rid of the exercise room. I just didn't want the walk-in closet in the bathroom, but I have that, it's fine by me if my fellow board members think it's agreeable.
Yeah, our whole concern is, you know, somewhere down the line converting to another apartment, which we don't want. So I guess a half a bath is fine. Like you said, you can keep the exercise room if you like.
The door again, just so the board is aware, the door is a sliding glass door to the exterior there, similar to the last application. Not a man door, but a sliding glass door, similar to, to the last application, to try to avoid that space becoming an additional dwelling unit. Madam Chair, I have no further witnesses, I have no further, uh, statements to make.
Does the board have any other questions?
The materials of the exterior all, uh, up to our Silver Lake code, right?
They will comply with the S.L.R. standards, that is correct, and there's no, uh, it's game now.
I'll open up to the public.
I have one other question, just one I forgot to ask. We begin, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Fledge Street. Uh, I've started the testimony, you indicated that there is a, uh, an existing lot. There is a, a single, a half-story house with a detached garage. So I assume there's a, uh, single curb cut, uh, in existence right now? So, uh, if your project gets approved and the subdivision occurs, I guess you need two, two curb cuts on the salted floors?
Yes, the, the existing curb cuts would become full face and the, uh, two new driveways would be, uh, two, two.
Just wanted to confirm this. So I guess that means, uh, did this second curb cut, one of the existing on-street parking spaces on Salter will be lost?
But the way, the way it is, uh, the way it's set up, I, I don't think it will be a full space that would be lost, uh, but, uh.
Do you have any idea how much, uh, on-street space will, will be lost in the process?
I would, I would say about six feet to eight, to eight feet. So it could be one more parking space.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the public? All right, I'll close this portion.
Just a brief summation, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, just like the, say, a few brief words in support of the application. The applicant is property owner, Acton Properties LLC, before the board tonight, seeking minor subdivision approval. You've heard testimony tonight regarding the design of the proposed subdivision and proposed use of the site, both which will fully conform to the Belleville zoning ordinances. Again, the subject property is located in the S.L.R. zone, and the two-family residential uses are permitted. In addition, only minor subdivision approval is requested tonight. There are no variances required in connection with this application. On the basis of the testimony and plans presented, I believe sufficient proofs have been provided to justify the granting of the minor subdivision approval requested. I respectfully ask that the board does approve this application. That would be very much appreciated.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to accept, to accept the plans, eliminating the walk-in closet, half-bath, and the sliding door? Not a limiting?
The half-bath stays. Yeah, half-bath stays. Agree.
Converting, converting. Keeping the sliding door.
Keeping the sliding door.
And keeping the sliding door, it was proposed.
And eliminating the walk-on closet.
And eliminating the closet.
Yes. So Councilor, that is what you're asking the board to consider, right, the revised plans as we've just stated it?
That is correct. And again, I will restate the revisions, just to put it on the record. Uh, we are converting the current full-bath to a half-bath in the first-floor area. We are eliminating, uh, the closet in the first-floor area. Uh, the exercise room will remain in the first-floor area.
Thanks, all with the sliding doors.
And the sliding glass door, uh, access to the, to the rear yard will remain in the first-floor area. Thank you very much.
All right, so, motion?
Motion.
Second. Chairwoman in El Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Vinerio?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgiano?
Yes.
Ms. Guam?
Yes.
Mr. Guyan?
Yes.
Mr. Fizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Zengarri?
Yes.
Okay, approved all in favor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, now, can I get a motion for an adjournment?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See everyone on, uh, July tenth?